I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion for the approval of the December eleventh agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Next we have reported board members. Let's start at the end, work our way back this way. Anything? Mr. Newton?
How's everybody doing this evening? All right, all right, so I attended the Men of Excellence Program. I had an outstanding time. I want to give Dr. Moore a salute and all his staff. Then invited me out. It was phenomenal time. I also went to the Harvest Program, being volunteer with them. Had an absolute tremendous time with all the citizens of Raytown and all volunteers that came out. Uh, I went to the uh, the annual Thanksgiving program services with the faith, faith of Raytown and Pastor Erica and I was supposed to be doing a um, a thing with Dr. Pernell, she was out of town and giving updates for what Raytown School District is doing. But they absolutely presented me a award that I was surprised about. So that kind of set up my idea of it. So I want to say thank you for that. Um, I went to the Sisters in Christ Strength and Strength Annual Gala. And uh, I want to give a salute to Ms. Bobby Salisbury and Dr. Martin Knox and put awards for that. And I want to say some looks in for that. And uh, I did a secret Santa today right there. I said, thank you guys for having me out. So thank you. That's what I did for this month. Thanks.
Thank you.
So, yeah, oh, okay. So um, I've had a privilege just of having students and some parents and teachers just do check-ins with me. Um, one thing I'm really super proud of, I was talking to some students the other day and they were just talking about how at Hernan Career Center, uh, wonderful programs there. But uh, the sports medicine program has been a lifeline uh, for some of the students. So I just want to give some shout-outs there. Um, I also had a good time. I showed up to do a debate for the last round. They already had enough judges, but I still got to do some check-ins um, over Raytown High School. I believe it was this past Friday. Um, I absolutely want to also give some shout-outs to Sister Act. Uh, if you were able to see it, it was fantastic. Uh, when my kids were in school, um, I, I saw kids come to life on that musical, just the singing and the dancing. Everything was magical and these were students, I'd say like four years ago, really quiet, more withdrawn and just seeing the, the arts and how that brings our students out. It just gave me a lot of pleasure and a lot of joy. Um, I'm currently partnering up with StuCo at South for the kids' Christmas party. Um, they are trying to support around eighty students. So every little bit helps out that we do. Um, and just for my own development as a board member, I am taking an online course of culturally diverse lens by the leading equity center and that's teaching uh, from that capacity. Um, and I believe that as board members, we should continue to grow, just like we as staff. So uh, for me, one of my accomplishments was I was able to recertify for my national boards.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I didn't do quite as much as everybody else this month, but I did get a chance to go see Sister Act. And when I tell you it was wonderful, I took my grandchildren and some of my other family members with me. I had a godson in there who doesn't talk. He really doesn't. He, you know, he's one of these. He, he, he showed out. He was good. So they were very good. Sister Act was very good. I too am uh, participating as a adopting a child. I got a chance to drop off my gifts today. Get it out of my hand and drop off my gifts today for a, a child at Raytown South. Got those gifts up there and I think it's beautiful, the way that the gifts are being gathered, the needy children. You get a chance to uh, help somebody in need. Let, let go of one of them, the McDonald burgers and don't get somebody hats and gloves if nothing else. You put me here for it. I also attended Sisters in Christ Strength and Strength uh, Gala on last evening and it was one evening before last and it was wonderful. And I want to give a shout-out to Ms. Bobby. You look beautiful and you deserve all the, the accolades that you got and to our own Dr. Martin Knox. And not only these two, but we also honored other uh, prestigious Raytown leaders uh, that were, that may not be here tonight, but I was proud of Raytown in the house. That's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Salisbury. Mr. Watson. Uh, good evening. I attended the uh, Men of Excellence Conference. I want to um, give a big up to Dr. Griner, Dr. Moore. Who put that on and got some feedback from a young man who attended the class. I know Mr. Newton spoke as well as Mr. Burton. So appreciate that. And attended the Strength and Strength Gala on Saturday where uh, Ms. Salisbury, Dr. Knox, uh, Vicky Turnbull was on as the retiring Raytown Chamber leader, as well as Whitney Dancer, who's been at REAP uh, for about thirteen years now. And then also been Bonnie M. So like Dr. Douglas said, um, a lot of great people in that house on Saturday night. So it was great to be involved.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Uh, as stated, I was also at the Boys Conference and I was really impressed by uh, the work you guys put forward. Uh, Dr. Griner and Dr. Moore. Uh, really appreciate that. Uh, look forward to uh, doing that year after year. Uh, and so appreciate the board members and their participation in the activity that you had. And uh, I want to say, thank you to Ms. Bobby Salisbury. She didn't want to say anything today. But uh, I really, I really appreciate her and the rest of the board members and everything that uh, you participate in, in the committees that you lead and the certificates and everything that you, that you go to make our community better. Uh, that's it for the reported board members. Next we have a reporter superintendent.
So good evening Chairman Burton, Vice Chairman Watson, members of the Raytown Quality School District Board and members of the Raytown Quality School District Community. Well, we are now approaching the holiday season and I don't want to be redundant to reiterate much of, I'm sorry, excuse me. Feel like eye contact is not where it should be and I don't want you to say, she didn't look at me. I'm looking at you. And so um, tis the season for us to celebrate and recognize one another. Um, as you can see from our social media platform and from our CTE view, we have so many talented children in our school district, whether it's when in the form of athletics, whether it's in the form of the arts, please find time during this season to make sure you attend any of the events possible. Our children are doing an amazing job with putting on productions. Um, I went to Westridge the other day and I did not mind uh, having to swap out chairs. Every time a parent stood up, I would sit where that parent sat until they came back. And then I felt like I was playing musical chairs, but it was fitting because the students had glow drumsticks and it was a collaborative effort with physical education and music. And so I just want to give a big shout-out to our staff over at Westridge and just to all of our teachers across the district because we're coming up to that time where we're entering into a new school year. And it's very hard. Again, I will always put my teacher's hat on, but I will tell you, you have the energy, you have the efforts. Our kids deserve it and you can do it. And I'm grateful for you and all the work that you do. Um, as we continue to move forward, you know, we have some staff here from Herndon. Uh, we were able to celebrate the fiftieth year anniversary and uh, it was an amazing event. What I want to encourage us to do is to continue to show our support for our CTE programs to make sure our children have options when they're graduating. I also want to again acknowledge our schools because at this point, we've been having our student forums. Raise your hand if you've ever seen one of the student forums with me and students. You're missing, I see one handed kind of, they kind of snuck up. You're missing a treat. It's an opportunity where I get to speak with students because they are our primary customers to find out what's working with them and for them because oftentimes we plan around them, for them, but not with them. And so when we have the student forums, I'm able to hear from students what it is that they're working or what they need more of. And I will tell you, most people say, why are you meeting with the elementary kids? Because they're people too. They're just little people. And if you hear the conversations that they have, when I hear them so eloquently tell me, we want more opportunities with our, to use our hands. We want more times where we stand up. Uh, they're talking about being tactile, being kinesthetic, all those things that we want uh, our children to engage in. And many of them, by the way, want to be teachers. So I'll say to you, thank you for being a model of excellence for them and encouraging more of them to go into the field of education. At this time, under the superintendent's report, I will now go to eight point five where we will have a presentation or information shared regarding our strategic planning update. Project number seven, Exploring Career Academy Model. Dr. Griner.
Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox, President Burton, Vice President Watson, members of the board. It's my pleasure tonight to share a brief update on one of our strategic planning projects that we are excited about uh, this year. And that is looking at our high school model and figuring out what are ways that we can best prepare students for what's next. Uh, as part of the board's strategic plan, goal one is around college and career readiness. And we know as a district, we need to continue to explore and pursue ways that we can bring more opportunities to our students, but also build partnerships with our community at the same time. So uh, for tonight's uh, presentation, I have some um, friends with me that are going to join us uh, during the presentation uh, to share some of their experiences. I know Mr. Newton has been part of our, this discussion as well. So we're thankful for nobody to have engaged with us. Uh, but for tonight. All right, thank you. Sorry. Operator was my bad. Uh, so tonight we're going to talk about uh, the conversation that we've been having around transforming uh, our high schools. And so I want to, uh, board, this may be tough to read on your screen. I want to encourage you the, the links at some of these slides. So the full strategic plan document is linked here on the slide at the top. But I wanted to pull just a few soundbites from our strategic plan vision that really sort of captured the district's interest in helping our students be prepared for what's next. And part of that journey are giving them experiences. Experiences not only inside the classroom, but outside of the classroom, in the community where they can serve. They can uh, learn and they can actually uh, work towards a high wage, high demand career that meets the needs of workforce development here in Raytown and in the Kansas City metro. So again, just a couple of soundbites there from the vision narrative from our strategic plan. Also just some specific language there around the strategic planning project. This Plan Seven is one of thirty-four strategic planning projects that the district is pursuing this year. And we are excited about this work. And again, we're here tonight to talk specifically about our Career Academy exploration. So I do want to shout out some of the people that have been an integral part of this exploration over the last several months. They're mentioned there on the screen. Several of them will be here tonight talking to you to help share this update of the work that we've been engaged in. But as you can tell, this work is very um, complex and, but yet it's exciting. And so our, our hope tonight is to share a little bit more about the progress we're making. Again, I know this is tough to see. I would encourage our audience that wants to learn more. Uh, this plan, all of our project plans are available on the district website under the strategic plan link. But this shows our timeline of events over the last several months, leading up to tonight, which is step eight on that plan of sharing an update with the Board of Education. So we've been engaging um, not only a smaller group of stakeholders that have been going out and actually seeing career academies in action, both locally and across the country. Um, but we've been engaging our employees as well to gain questions from our staff. Um, our plan eventually is that we will begin to engage other stakeholders like our parents and our students. But um, again, tonight is just an update on where we stand with our work around Career Academy exploration. And again, getting back to the why, why are we interested in this, in this exploration? We want to see our students be prepared for what's next. We want to make sure that our kids are leaving us not only with that diploma, but with a plan that's going to take them to a high wage, high demand career and meet workforce development needs here locally, both in Raytown and in the Kansas City metro. So I want to bring up our, our first uh, group of guests to speak from Raytown High. Uh, we had the pleasure of visiting uh, Nashville back in October and we took a group of stakeholders and on a field trip to explore what career academies were all about. And so our guests, as they're going to stop at the table and share with you some of their takeaways of how were they inspired or how were they challenged to think differently about what high school could look like here in Raytown? So I'm going to start with uh, Dr. McCarthy and Mr. Riker.
Andrew McCarthy, proud principal at Raytown High School. I think one of the things that I wanted to focus in on was the um, opportunity that provided for staff members. So uh, they were on a block schedule. So four classes one day, four classes the other, and they had a planning each of those days. So one of their planning days was with their academy model and then one of them was with their professional learning team. So if they were in English, they were in English one day working with their team, but on the other day, they were in their academy model. So there might be an English or social studies, a science, um, some type of teachers that are in the nursing field, if they were in the medical field. So there was a time for their planning. And so my, my first three points there are about the teacher connection. They have the time period built into their day where they're asked and tasked with um, creating lesson plans that work together. Um, so an English teacher or, or one of the things I, one of the things we talked about was a biology teacher um, that taught cells, but was in the auto mechanic. And so they were looking at the model of a cell by using um, an automobile and the parts of the automobile to make up that cell.
Good evening. Josh Riker, Assistant Principal at Raytown High School. I wanted to talk about the student connection side of things. And uh, something that uh, you, I saw a lot more of was the increased rigor in classes and the wide range of dual credit offerings and how those continue to um, add on every single year as they're going through, whether that was dual credits in the arts, um, on the CTE side of things. There were so many different uh, opportunities for students to get college credit if they wanted it. Uh, there were the career fields of interest uh, for the students and so many different ones. Whether again, uh, when we were in independence, they had a lot of different opportunities in terms of art classes, whether it was visual arts, they also had stuff on the theatrical arts sides of things. And so students were able to kind of get that path and purpose with what direction did they want to go in? And uh, I think when, you know, you give students those opportunities to where it's not, hey, do whatever you want. But hey, you could do A, B, C, D, E, F and really kind of streamline it so they can think about where they want to go, whether it is like I said, in the art side or on the technical side. Uh, you know, there's a lot of different classes, learning opportunities, and then those hands-on experiences uh, where teachers can get in there with the students and really engage with them. Uh, the students were really excited about those opportunities that they had. Thank you.
Shelton Hammond, Principal of Raytown South High School. Uh, one of the things that helped me to really be encouraged about academies is that our kids can actually earn a living wage. And also during that time, they can re, they can receive industry-recognized credentials. So they can graduate being ready to work and also being able to attend college also. And if they do not decide to attend college now, they can make enough money maybe to save to be able to go to college at a later point. Uh, they exit, they, the exit points of two years, four-year trade schools or employment opportunities, they are just great. And also the dual credit was important to me, that a student could graduate with an associate's degree and already have those college credits. And parents don't, our parents or the students, they don't have to pay for those college uh, classes. So those are some of the things that for us, we think that our kids would benefit from and we believe that this is the best option for our students.
Good evening. Nick Atkins from Raytown South High School, one of the assistant principals. Um, the academy model has really shown us the ability to prepare kids for life after high school and the experiences that they can do once they leave our four-year program. Um, I went to five different high schools in two weeks and the experiences that those kids were getting is different than the experiences that our kids are getting. And I think that the academy model really provides us with more ways to prepare our young people for what they can do after school. And you know, there was a handful of kids that were like, this is my, this is where I want to be and I'm excited. Let's go do my four-year program. And we had a couple of kids that said, hey, I don't love this. And they've learned that for free with us and now can go at a different path in high school, so our college. So it kind of goes both ways.
Good evening. My name's Erica Miller. I'm a high school counselor at Raytown South and I am the current district counseling coordinator. One thing that spoke to me from a counseling perspective was a supportive and personalized learning environment. Every student that I spoke with really felt like they belonged to their school and to their community and most importantly, to their academy that they were a part of. Each academy had their own designated counselor and administrator that followed the students throughout the high school, their high school experience and were experts within that academy and knew their students very well. The academies also, I felt like improved the student engagement. Students understood that what they were looking for, what they were working towards was um, a goal after high school. They felt like their learning was meaningful and important. It also prepared them both for work and college. Every academy, each high school had three to five academies and every academy had, has that would prepare students for work right out of high school, for work after two years of college, four years of college or beyond. They understood what they were working towards and they had options when they graduated from high school to either go to college or go straight into the workforce.
Hi, Jennifer Northcutt. I am the lead counselor at Raytown High. Um, some things that were really exciting and energizing uh, for me um, were really the, the, the statistics that they presented to us, the data that they presented on the growth that they've seen in the areas that we really want to focus on, which is attendance, graduation progress, um, high school completion. So they saw so much growth in those areas and that was really exciting. Um, it was also really exciting to see students um, so connected to their building and the light leadership opportunities that were, were present for them within the academies and um, just the excitement that they had about going to school in general. Um, and it really, it really was, was very evident that it increased their connectedness to the school. Um, and in, in the community was also very connected to the school itself. And so that was really refreshing and exciting to see.
Good evening. I am Kiana Dickerson, the Real World Learning Coordinator over at Raytown High School. One of my biggest takeaways from the academy's visit in Nashville, Tennessee was how the business partners, as far as the community, was heavily engaged in this academy's model. So one of the things that we had um, discovered was how we would have to reframe our business partnership connection when it comes to creating this academy model for Raytown Quality Schools. Our engagement was coming, well, their engagement was all of the community partners as far as each academy. So one of the main things that we would have to do is partnering and expanding, expanding that partnership with the Raytown Chamber of Commerce and honestly identifying the workforce development needs that is within our community, allowing that to lead towards students learning those industry-recognized credentials and um, being able to work with those business partners outside of the high school and even inside the classroom, building those client-connected projects, leading to different things in the community that they can be engaged in.
Good evening. Go Chiefs. Um, my name is Terrence Fraser. I'm the coordinator of Real World Learning at Raytown South High School. Uh, what I walked away with regarding the academies is that it increased student engagement. Um, it decreased suspension rates. Um, and it also increased um, the students getting involved and working with the vast array of companies from different industries that's uh, concerned their interests. Uh, another thing is it leads to vast uh, economic growth. And what that means is you have an opportunity to meet the workforce development needs reasonably and locally.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Riker, Director, Hernan Career Center. And um, the information I would like to share with you is really about the, what is the impact to a career center? If you're talking about career academies. At the, at Hernan Career Center, we have approximately a hundred and eighty Raytown School District students out of our about six hundred students. And what most people don't realize is really what that means is it's less than ten students from Raytown Schools per program area. And they've selected those programs based off of their needs and their wants. And so um, the Career Academy model allows more students to focus in a pathway of the learning that they are wanting to pursue. Um, maybe for a career and maybe they are learning about a career and they decide um, as someone else had shared, that maybe that wasn't the right career for them um, once they got into it and learned a little bit more. And so um, for example, if you look at the healthcare field, there's a huge shortage of workforce in the healthcare right now at lots of different levels. We currently have Intro Two, PT and Sports Med. We have Foundations of Nursing where students get their CNA and we also have EMT. We have other students at Raytown South High School and Raytown High School that want to pursue healthcare careers that maybe they, based off of their schedule, they can't commit to half a day to come to Herndon um, to pursue those options. And so the Career Academy model allows more students to really do that pathway work at a younger age so that they can have a better plan whenever they leave high school um, with some experience and some curriculum specific to the pathway that they want to pursue. In the Career Academy model, Herndon doesn't go away. CAPS doesn't go away. It just expands opportunities for students. And so it's not just the hundred and eighty students that are at Herndon currently, currently from the Raytown School District. It expands the career learning for all of our students at the high school level. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox, President Burton, Vice President Watson. Um, I wanted to share a little bit about some of the misconceptions that we realized once we visited. Um, we walked in with a few concerns and there were three areas that really allowed us the opportunity to, to answer these questions. Um, one of the first questions that came from some of our staff is, is this a departure from the curriculum? The way that is designed, that the standards that are needed for students to learn are still addressed? We still have the opportunity to um, follow the curriculum that we have, but we also open up this great opportunity to connect real-world learning experiences in the classroom. So as we follow the curriculum, we also come together as a team. We design projects, we design um, activities that will help expand the understanding of how to write as a professional within that career, how, um, what, um, what other experiences they may need. So it's not a departure from the curriculum and the essential standards, but it is an expansion of it. The other misconception that we, that was addressed is this idea of um, there wouldn't be as many opportunities for fine arts and other, other courses, elective courses. But we, but you need all of those courses to make the schedule work because those are going to be your universal courses. It allows um, the teams the opportunity to have the uh, PLC or your collaboration time with your content, but it also allows you to have the time with your academy team. So you need the um, the elective courses and there's really an expansion because you have to have that time for those teams to meet. And finally, um, there was this question, what happens when a student makes a decision from eighth grade to ninth grade and they don't like it? They still have the opportunity to find another pathway, but they may not receive all of the experiences or, or to get all of those credits that they may need to get to um, that certification, but they will get the experiences and they have that opportunity. So they will at least get the opportunity at that um, value asset, so that market value asset.
Mr. Newton, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'll just ask anything you want to add as a board member who traveled with us to Nashville, uh, some of your takeaways from the academy model.
First, I want to say I appreciate you guys inviting and having me along. Um. Absolutely, as always, pros and cons to everything. So the pros that I took away from it was uh, the purpose, it gives every kid the purpose and it created a lot of purpose for kids and it gave them the paths. It increased their attendance rate. That was huge. Um, it also created clarity for the kids and they were able to switch paths. They, if they didn't find it, that right path that they picked was right. Um, the community partners, like as Dickerson said, was huge. So in order for, it, it gave us the opportunity to get a lot of community partners. It was one, it was one teacher in particular. We went to a school where they had a parking lot inside the school. The teacher was phenomenal. Her energy was phenomenal. Um. She, she kind of inspired me. I had one teacher that I truly remember in school. It was a second grade teacher. The reason why I remember that teacher is because she made me feel like I belong. Um, and here's what I'm saying. One thing that bothers me about this, or one thing that I'm concerned about is, is teacher turnover. Um, and uh, workloads on teachers. That's the only thing that kind of concerns me about this and when we talk about this. Um. I know that this can be done and I want this to be done because I think it's great for kids. But I want to make sure that we take care of the whole quop of everybody and the teachers need to be taken care of as well. So I think it's everything all in a wop. I think the kids are going to tremendously benefit from this. I want everybody to tremendously benefit from this. So I, I think it's a win-win for everybody. Everybody can benefit. So thank you guys for having me.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Newton. So again, just very quickly back to our plan, uh, and I want to emphasize this. This is an exploration for us. There have been no commitments. There have been no decisions made. Uh, but in order for us to explore, we have to go down the road a bit and begin to ask questions. Um, and I appreciate our staff for the good questions that they are asking us as we visited with both high school staffs. There are legitimate concerns that our staff has and we want to work collaboratively. Not only for us to figure those things out, but partner with organizations that can help us work through those issues that all communities face, not just Raytown. Uh, and so um, we hope that we would have that opportunity to take a next step. And so what I'm sharing with you tonight is a next step for us would be to engage Ford Next Generation Learning with an exploration visit. Again, that does not mean that we are moving towards Career Academies formally. We have not made that decision. But Ford Next Gen will come into our community and they will talk to our stakeholders. They will visit with our staff. They will visit with our students. They're going to visit with our families, with business. Um, they're going to be asking questions to help understand, is, is the, the time right for us to take that next step? And the answer might be, we're not there yet. There are some things that we need to address. And so if that's the recommendation from Ford Next Gen, we'll certainly take that into consideration. But really a next step for us is to partner with an organization that does this transformational work all over the world. Um, they're partnering and working in communities that look a lot like Raytown. I'll mention um, just very quickly in this last slide and, and we don't have time tonight to play all these videos, but I would encourage you, uh, board to take a look at these links. Um, many of these communities, both locally and across the country, um, look a lot like Raytown. Uh, and they have the talent, both in the staff and students, the desire to connect with communities. So I just would encourage uh, the board to, to engage in um, the links and certainly ask us any questions and I'll do my best to try to answer any questions the board might have at this point about where we are in this process and where we're going.
I love the excitement. Here's what I'm talking about. This is all talking about what you experienced down there, the innovation in education. Uh, the discipline for our students in this district. I think that's so important to engage our students. Um, and I love the questions uh, that Jessica, the misconception that Jessica talked about, uh, whereas it doesn't take away from the regular model with regular student um, achieving or goals. My question then is how does, have we worked or talked about, uh, talk about this with like Independence or Belton, some of the local districts on the list who I'm sure you had a little bit about that.
Yeah, so we had the chance actually to send some staff to Independence. They had a, an academy visit day. Um, so we, we did send some of our high school staff to um, Independent School District uh, in late October to understand locally with some work that's happening in Independence and Belton have both partnered with Ford Next Gen to build their, their academy models. I will say that Independence and Belton's models look different and they were built intentionally to meet the needs of their community. So one of the things that I really appreciate about a partnership with Ford Next Generation is that they come and work to develop a model that fits the needs of the community. They do not have a, a one size fits all system. They really engage to understand the pros and cons of the current reality. And then work with that community, not to stay in that current reality, to get better. So we have had the chance to talk with both Independence and Belton as well as visit and explore with other communities um, around the country. And that Nashville visit allowed us not only to learn more about Nashville, but also many other communities that are engaged in the, in the transformation to an academy model. And they all are on varying stages in that process. As we look at um, this, this roadmap, this is a multi-year, multifaceted transformation. So it's not sudden change. It happens over time, but we have engaged with Independence and Belton as well as communities across the country.
Mr. President, so um, thank you for that presentation and hearing from everyone out here. Um, it definitely sounds like something positive and a vibe of change. Um, and visiting these different schools and just learning about their models. What were some of their, I know that no communities like us, but what were some of their challenges that they had to navigate through? Because I know a lot has come up tonight about some misconceptions, uh, maybe even some fear about um, impact that could be made on programs such as fine arts. And so what were some of the takeaways and how they navigated those hurdles uh, within their community and with staff, et cetera?
Yeah, I think one of the biggest uh, challenges in this process is just how intentional the school district is communicating and engaging our staff, our families, our students, uh, our leadership, our business. So how can we bring everyone together to engage in a conversation that takes time for us to build? This, this is not a, a one meeting and we've got it figured out. This is a process that takes multiple years. Um, and it involves asking tough questions. Sometimes maybe not having all the answers in that moment, but where can we go to find other communities like us that have faced similar challenges? And I think that's the benefit of partnering with Ford Next Generation Learning is they are navigating those peaks and valleys of the transformation with many other communities that face some of the same challenges that we do. Um, I think that's the benefit of engaging with a thought partner like Ford Next Generation Learning is that we don't have all of the answers collectively here in district, but with support from others outside of the district. They can help us find the answers and find the answers that fit for Raytown.
Mr. President, I was happy to know a couple of things. I had some questions about it, including the whole family. And I was happy to know the Raytown Board doing some of the things that was already asked. So I'm happy to know that. The other thing is when I asked about the family, they answered the question and we do have some of those things in place. Uh, the other thing I was happy to know about is that we can make the change and we do have the people that can do it. So those are the things I was happy to know about. Uh, and we went down there, we got direct answers to some of the things that can make this possible. So it was a well worth taking trip. Um, and I think it, it would be truly beneficial if, if it can happen. So like I said, I think if it can be made possible, it's a great situation and I'm looking forward to it. So thank you so much for taking it.
Mr. President, I just want to say something funny. So, uh, as you were talking and everybody was uh, coming forward, I really liked the display because though I wasn't there, but I was visualizing being there based on what was being said. So this came to me. And I'm just going to share with you, you know, Star Trek um, mission statement is to go, let's see here. Uh, anyway, you all know the story because I'm sure you've watched before. Go where, where. Yeah, no man has ever gone before, but in this case, we do have others that have gone in this place and I'm so excited about just listening to what you all are saying. It is an exciting time for Raytown School District. I hope that we do grab a hold of this and bring this and put this into our scope of learning. So this is just awesome. And just remember what I said, we're going for, no man has gone before, but in this case, man has gone. So we're going to join those men. We're rising up. We're going forward, Raytown.
I had a question. Um, in regards to our current uh, status um, as far as our performance. Uh, I think, I feel like I know the answer, but uh, how does this affect, is this like uh, something that's added on to? Uh, in trying to improve uh, for our performance or is this uh, would it be, would it take, if it work, does this align with what we're trying to accomplish in the next year or two?
Yeah, I believe that it does, President Burton. So uh, there's a lot of complexities to, to the strategic plan and where we're going in a lot of different areas. Of course, we're worried and, and, and we want our students achieving well. We want our community to be part of our school district and we know that part of that is representative on our accreditation level and the performance on our report card and all those things. What we found from visiting with districts similar to Raytown that had uh, similar um, metrics, data points, pre academies to where they found themselves five, 10, 15 years down the line. There was a transformation in many areas, not only in just student belongingness, preparedness, their own belief that they're ready for what's next, but also their attendance rates, their dropout rates. Um, their performance on high stakes tests. All of it was part of a culture of transformation and connection. And so students really worked to see the, the benefit of coming to school every day and doing their best, of working in a team environment to achieve a common goal. And so the more opportunities that they, those students had to work in those environments, a byproduct of that were some of those metrics that school districts are judged on. It's not the primary reason, but I definitely believe it to be a byproduct of the transformation in the culture of how students see themselves and what they believe they're leaving Raytown Quality Schools with at the end of their twelfth grade year.
All right. Uh, well, I want to say that I wasn't there, but you guys almost made me feel like I was. And uh, I don't know that I've had another presentation inside this boardroom that is still more hope than I feel right now. And so uh, I look forward to uh, seeing how we progress.
Mr. President. So I'm not clear. So we passed the strategic plan. But we're talking about tonight, are you already doing that? Are we moving that way? Or is there going to be a specific action that you're going to ask the board to take?
Yeah, so part of the project plan is to, and we will come back to the board with an update, but part of the exploration of an academy model is to bring Ford Next Generation Learning into our district for a site visit so that they can talk to our staff, our students, our families, our local business and assess how ready are we to take that, that leap or that next step into a formal uh, as you move into that um, next step in the process, moving to that envision phase where you actually develop an academy master plan.
Um. So that's my second question. Will that be helping you to, to, to develop the financial costs of doing this?
Yes, they will share, they will share with us their projections for staffing um, and, and other related costs that, that could potentially come with this. Again, they're not making any, we're not making any um, promises to move forward. We just are simply wanting Ford Next Gen Learning to come to our district and audit us to, to share how ready are we to take the next step? Because they may tell us these are five or six things that we feel like you need to address first. As we've visited with all the stakeholders, you need to address these things first before maybe you're ready to take that next step. So part of the uh, in consent agenda tonight is a Ford Next Gen exploration visit um, process and, and we are looking to engage with Ford Next Gen in February for them to come in district and to uh, conduct that exploration visit with us.
Mr. President.
Forty-nine. Thank you.
So thank you, Dr. Greiner. Um, this is a heavy undertaking, but as you can hear from the uh, leaders who traveled with us. Notice I said us um, to Tennessee. Um, it's very important that I, as the leader, understand. Um, and as Covey says all the time, seek first to understand. Uh, goes back to the question you asked, Mr. Moore, and I want us to look at the exploration visit and the roadway. I don't want to take Raytown and put Raytown into a box that's work for others. I want us to build our own space and I don't want us to build a box. I want us to build the road and a pathway that leads all of our children to a place of success. And so as we do this, it's most important that we engage our teachers, our administrators, our parents and our students in this work. This is not something that's going to happen overnight. This is going to be a long, strategic, methodical, thought out plan so that it does not fail. Because if we fail, we fail our children, we fail our community. So this is not something that's just going to happen overnight. But as Dr. Greiner has said, and many of the others who said coming to the podium uh, or to the desk, if you will, um, we have to do something different to make sure we're engaging all of our learners. Uh, some of the um, work that takes place with academies, I know Dr. Greiner has done research and I know superintendents who've done this. But when you talk to superintendents who've had school districts that have been taken over by the state because of their performance or lack thereof, and they've now flipped it on its head. It has worked, it does work and it will work, but I don't want Raytown to be another school district. I want us to be our own place where we're doing what's best for our children. And again, as we go along, again, this is not something that's going to take place overnight. It's going to be a long road ahead. I don't want everybody to think that I'm going to wake up in the morning and say, okay, we're going to do this. It, it doesn't work and it will not be successful in doing so. And so I just want to thank the team. Uh, I was so proud uh, to sit in the room with many of them and every room that we went into, I don't know if it was good, bad or indifferent. The presenters and Dr. McCarthy was like, you guys are amazing. It was like they've misbehaved the entire time we've been here. So I'm not sure if you're going to invite us back. But it was really a space and place where we learned to grow together. Um, and again, to make sure you understand the importance of it. I did have to pull away from being here to go with them uh, to travel just so I can see myself and learn alongside um, our leaders. And at that with, without further ado, and thank you, Dr. Greiner, and happy birthday to you. Uh, yes, twenty-nine it is. And so eight point six, uh, the report from our students representatives, uh, our amazing students representatives. And you know, um, one of them already had a birthday this week too. So I don't want, I don't, I don't, I don't want to put them out there anymore, but right Riley?
You put me out there. I was out there. Uh, good evening. Um, I am Riley Betran. I am the Student Council President for Raytown South High School. Um, and this is.
My name is Kara Shilling. I am the Vice President for Raytown South High School.
And so um, unfortunately, our uh, uh, Executive Board Secretary was not able to be here, but uh, last board meeting, she shared with you the Black History Month program um, that we are planning. Um, and just I have a little update for you. Um, they have put an entire schedule together and we've gotten the green light. So it's very exciting um, to see what that committee of, of the council has in store for all of us. Um, and then with that, uh, we also want to say that some council members uh, have made different spotlights of famous, famous black Americans uh, for every day during February. So on our Instagram, we'll post every day a spotlight or a person that we want to spotlight and celebrate um, from the council. Um, board members had previously mentioned the Christmas party that Southside is hosting. Um, for some numbers, we have over eighty students that we were able to uh, sponsor fully and get gifts for. Um, student council only had it adopted, uh, only had to adopt four. Um, in past years, we had to adopt upwards of twelve. And so um, it's just kind of a great feeling to see both more student and staff engagement um, with the Christmas party. Um, on the Christmas party, we will, we had to, so our model for it is going to be station ideas. So as kids come in. So as kids come in, um, they can pick, uh, they can get to take pictures with Santa. Uh, we have a game station that they can do. Uh, they can decorate cookies and they get hot chocolate. Uh, we have a craft station, uh, we have a karaoke for our choir kids. And then um a stacking cups tree game that we have planned. So we're super excited about that. The Christmas party is taking place December eighteenth at six P M in the Raytown South uh cafeteria. Uh, lastly from me, um, Student Council also wants to recognize that students have um other beliefs around, uh, and want to inform about all the other major holidays going around at this time. And so we've created a um bulletin board in the cafeteria to celebrate um all those other holidays and also inform people about those other holidays.
Hello, board again. Um, it is holiday season, as Riley just mentioned. Um, we have stockings up for teachers, so every single teacher at South receives a stocking outside of their door that students, staff, um, and I mean, really anybody that comes to the school can donate to, um, just to give a little more teacher appreciation to our teachers that do a lot for us at South. Um, and then we are also going to the student side with our holiday candy grams. Starting tomorrow, we will sell them for one dollar at lunch and that's just a way for students to spread holiday cheer and like, just get the, get the energy up. Then going on to the more serious side, um, we previously, this past Wednesday, talked to the superintendent about um our Cardinal shop. So we have wrote, like located our money in our Cardinal shop. That has um hoodies, t-shirts, stuff like that that we have just ordered recently for the school year that we will be selling in the cafeteria. So, thank you Superintendent Dr. Martin Knox, we love you. Questions? Any questions? We were going to, but um we did not end up doing that. I'm really sorry, Mr. President. We, we can, we can get you a sweatshirt. Hey, hey, what is this? Okay, alright. We'll, we'll mail you a hoodie. Watch the mail. Thank you, guys.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sierra Waters and I'm representing Raytown High School Student Council. I am the Student Council Chairwoman for Raytown Student Council. And here are my different events that we have coming up. Um, just recently, we just closed our donations for adopt the family and my, our Student Council did amazing. We did almost four times our intended goal, so that was great. Uh, I have to give some shout outs for the freshmen. They like outdid every other class for Student Council. They raised over two hundred fifty dollars, which was amazing because each class had to uh raise at least fifty dollars, which was crazy. I wasn't expecting that at all. And yeah, we raised over our goal and we're currently shopping and wrapping gifts for our huge families. Court warming, we have voted all throughout the Student Council that we are doing court warming. It is notoriously, notoriously known that it is hard to motivate students to go to court warming. And in previous years, um, we just did not do it. For about five years, we just completely didn't do it at all. And just last year, I have to give another shout out to Chase Durner. He completely led the entire operation of um court warming. And he's gonna be doing the same thing this year just to make sure that it's, it's a success and it's gonna be the same thing. It's gonna be sneaker ball, which is pretty cool. Everybody loves that one. School activities for different clubs. Of course, we have a phenomenal debate team, like they're killing it out. And then we're also uh, the theater department is putting on the show Six, which is another all women's uh show. Shout out to Mrs. Postman, she's amazing. And our girls team is doing their tournament in Butler and they leave today and they're gonna do it all week. And our boys' basketball team is going up against Chrisman tomorrow at five thirty. And the theme is ugly sweaters. So Dr. Knox, if you wanna go with your ugly sweater? Oh. She doesn't own nothing ugly, like we seen our whole closet. Okay, and finally for that section, uh concert season is here. Um, choir is performing as we speak right now and the jazz improv, symphonic band and concert band is performing all on Thursday starting at five thirty. And as a plug, as the drum major, previous drum major, we are having a fundraiser, a bake sale at also five thirty. So I would love especially you, Dr. Knox, to hear how hard we've been working and we're doing like we, we're doing so good right now. And jazz improv is something serious, like you have to hear it. And yeah. Of course, like, like, okay. Next up is Cookies and Cramming. We're doing that starting on the twelfth and the fourteenth. Cookies and Cramming is something that Raytown Student Council and partners with N H S to help students uh prepare for finals. We provide hot chocolate and cookies and N H S members are able to gain hours through tutoring subjects like English and math, et cetera.
Be sure to, uh, remind, uh, Mr. Moore, he, he especially likes soda.
After school, the twelfth and fourteen, two thirty, be there. It was a huge, it was a huge success in previous years, so of course we had to bring it back and, you know, we just love to do service projects just like that. Our spirit week, my um college and career prep teacher brought it to my attention. That is my last full week of my last semester in high school, which was crazy to me. I didn't even think of it like that. But yeah, we are having a spirit week because of that, hence I have, today was pajamas day, so I had, put on my pajamas. I swear I'm semi-professional. And tomorrow is family picture day, so we're all gonna be wearing flannels and things like that. And Student Council has a leadership class during fourth hour and we have been analyzing our semester so far as a group to get different perspectives on how we can better our Student Council. And we've just been making plans on how we can do that and how we can show us, show other people outside of Student Council how hard we work and what other, how big our organization is. Uh, we also do monthly inclusive meeting for C B I students who are able to do as much Stuco things outside of school. So our next one is next Wednesday and we're gonna be decorating Christmas ornaments and, you know, it's gonna be some, something fun. The last one was uh, snowflakes, yes, snowflakes. And they helped us decorate our show boxes, which was really cool. And I love like talking to them and stuff. They're so fun. Uh, and that's basically it. Would y'all like to see any of our progress and pictures and things? As we set, as we set up for these different events, well, follow us on Instagram. At Raytown Student Council on Instagram. Dr. Knox is a, she's a very, we love Dr. Knox. She loves like she, she likes all of our posts and she's very active on Instagram and we just love that about her. We don't see that in a lot of teachers and stuff and seeing that from our leader, it's really cool. Again, just follow us on Instagram to see all these different events going on and behind the scenes and stuff. And the intention of me saying this is to build this audience, to keep us at a better expectation and showing people all the things that we do behind the scenes. And that's it for me.
We wanna need you to uh stay afterwards and show us how to get on Instagram. Next we have uh Ray.
Good evening, President Burton, Vice President Watson, Dr. Martin Knox. This evening for Ray of Hope, we are recognizing Dominic Edwards, who is a student at Spring Valley Elementary School, who is a published artist. He has this amazing accomplishment of having his artwork selected as the cover of the Fall 2023 Missouri Arts Education Association's Show Me Art Magazine cover, which is a mouthful. And we are so very proud of him and we have a video um with a little bit more about Dominic.
Hello, I am Melissa Gabbard, the principal at Spring Valley Elementary. Our school community was so excited to hear that Dominic's art was published on a magazine. His class immediately clapped and cheered when they heard his accomplishments on our morning announcements. I shared the exciting news to his mom in the car rider line and had copies of his artwork to give to her. She was so happy to hear of this news of his wonderful accomplishment. The arts overall are so important for our students in order to give them opportunities to develop their creativity and showcase their talents.
Hi, my name is Dominic Edwards. I like art because it's very fun and also you get to play with colors, experiment and stuff. Well, I made it because we were doing a project in art and so I chose uh the colors that I picked because I think that they were really vibrant and because it matches the color of the sea. Drawing, it's like you get to add more details, well, not more details, but you get to add like shadow and stuff like that. And also you get to experiment more with colors, without colors, because they're sketching, they're sketches and not like actual drawings. I'm pretty excited because uh I didn't think that it was that good, but then I got um transferred to a magazine and then I thought that it was pretty good because I took a second look at it.
Congratulations, Dominic, and if you'll come on up?
That's amazing. Uh, every month, uh, something more and more surprising is, is incredible. And I really like uh appreciating the, the uh, the teachers and the uh students who do those incredible things every month. And so it's good to know that uh those things are going on here in Raytown. Next we have uh our public comment period. And uh, we have one person signed up to make comment in regards to uh agenda item B B F, School Board Member Ethics. Uh, our policy B D D H provides that the district residents and employees may sign up at a board meeting to speak on matters placed on the agenda for consideration. A period of time not to exceed thirty minutes. Five minutes will be allotted to each person except in instances where in six more persons have indicated a desire to speak. Tonight we only have one, uh, so they will be given the five minutes. Uh, speakers will not be permitted uh to participate in gossip, make defamatory comments or use abusive or vulgar language. Uh, tonight, we have Mary Regan. If she'll be coming up. Hi, who'd start your five minutes? And I will, I will let you, I'll raise my hand when we got one minute left.
Alright, good evening, School Board. Madman, hi. Uh, my name's Mary Regan. I'm the president of the Raytown N E A. On behalf of the Raytown National Education Association, we are speaking to address a recent allegation regarding a board member and a teacher. We advocate for the respectful treatment of all educators and school staff within our educational environment. This alleged incident undermines the hard work of our teachers and sets a troubling precedent for workplace conduct in our district. It is vital that Raytown educators receive unwavering support from the administration and school board, especially in situations when their safety and respect are at risk. We, we request that the board conduct a thorough investigation into this matter and take all necessary steps to ensure the safety and well-being of students and staff. It is imperative that the school administration and the board visibly commit to supporting and protecting our educators' professional environment. Establishing a safe and respectful workplace extends, extends beyond addressing isolated incidents. It involves building a culture where every staff member feels valued and secure. Decisive action in responding to this alleged incident is crucial for restoring trust and confidence among our educators and the school board. We appreciate your immediate attention to this and look forward to a constructive resolution. Working together, we can uphold our community's values and maintain an environment that supports effective teaching and learning. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment period. Next we have our board committee reports. First we'll go with the uh Finance Committee.
Uh, Mr. President, uh Finance Committee met this evening, uh main uh, per meeting centered around uh meeting with our audit board discussing the six thirty twenty-three financial statements. And uh, the main point is, is a, a clean, unmodified opinion. That means a, a, a good, good statement on the audits. No problems, no findings, no question costs in the federal section of the audit. And our, our finances are in good shape. We are at twenty-three point six five on our fund balances, twenty-three point six five percent. So that's the main, main item for this evening from Finance Committee.
Thank you. Uh, next we have the Policy Review Committee.
President, the Policy Committee will be meeting this app.
And I will give a report on the Capital Improvement Committee. We uh, Capital Improvement Committee met uh last week and we discussed uh our current bond projects uh and uh what's uh, how they're progressing. They are, uh, both projects are moving forward and uh we have some uh issues that require us to use some of our uh contingency, but there's plenty of uh contingency uh funds available. Uh, we discussed uh future uh projects and future needs that the, uh, the board, I mean, that the uh school district may have in regards to uh, uh, what, what funding we would need and, and setting priorities and how those things are, are determined. And just some, some different ideas about uh just how to service our uh, our, our children, our students better and to remain competitive with the, with the local districts around us. The report on the bond projects and capital improvements will be given uh by Mr. Josh Houston irregularly. And so I had a committee report. Next we have uh Community Engagement.
Mr. President, uh, we will be moving forward with the dual uh credit update and we'll be moving forward with the dual credit uh consolidation services to get the dual credit for the students to have a two point five. So we'll be moving forward, that moving toward the committees to get that approved. And we'll also be moving forward getting C C N, College Culture Network approved for the, for them to get uh more scholarships for the seniors that have, have been wanted to that, to that service. So that is the cool, the community engagement committee report.
Right. Curriculum and Professional Development Committee.
Mr. President, we will have a um report at our next
Mr. President, we will have a report at our next board meeting in January.
Right. And Citizens Advisory Committee.
We have not. Citizens Advisory Committee has not met since the last board meeting that we had.
Right. So just as a reminder to our board members and so everyone else knows, these committees were formed in the past, even if they're remembering to, to take a lead in that, get more involved this way. We can coordinate with our senior staff and, and just keep abreast of what's going on and, and kind of stay in touch and in tune with what's going on in our schools and just come up with different ideas to make sure that we're, we're working together. Each committee has two board members on it and those, out of those committees, they're responsible to make recommendations to the entire board, to bring that to the board so we can, and then approve or disapprove whatever that committee has set forth. Yes. That's the whole focus of this, and I appreciate, I'm sorry.
Raytown Educational Foundation.
Oh, it's coming.
Okay.
Yeah. You're, you're special. All right. So I need a motion for the Capital Approvals Committee Meeting Minutes.
President, I move the board approve the December seventh twenty-three Capital Improvement Committee Meeting Minutes.
Motion's made. Second it. Motion passes. All right, now we have the Raytown Educational Foundation.
Good evening, the Raytown Educational Foundation Board of Trustees Meeting Highlights for November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. Teaching and app learning grants. There were two for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four teaching and app learning grant recipients presented to, they presented their reports to the Rep. Board of Trustees and entertained questions from the board members. Life University, the Raytown Educational Foundation provided the blue coat uniforms and name tags for the Life University interns through a teaching and app learning grant. Board members watched the Life University video created by the Raytown Quality Schools Communication Department for its Ray of Hope series. Teacher Vivian McKinney shared unexpected benefits of the uniforms as well as describing the coding ceremony for the interns that took place in September. The coding ceremony was modeled after the traditional white coat ceremony that takes place when a student enters medical school. Like the white coat ceremony, the Life University coat ceremony had parents placing the coat on the intern to mark this important transition in their life. STEM in the gym. Raytown Educational Foundation has been a sponsor of the district STEM in the gym event for the last eight years. Raytown Educational Foundation provides the fund for the event to host science demonstrations from KC Mad Science. This year's demonstration included up, up, amp, away, a demonstration of air impression, fire and amp ice, a demonstration of chemical reaction, and stunt plane fun, a hands-on activity for students to create a plane and fly it toward a target. Student recognition. Raytown Educational Foundation holds separation, holds celebration events to recognize high school students each quarter. For each quarter, each quarter has a different area of recognition. First quarter recognition criteria was tardies. Future quarter recognition criterias include academics, attendance, and behavior. First quarter's fall fest, recognize student at both high school who had no more than seven tardies from the first day of school through the last day of the quarter, October thirteenth. Eligible students at both schools, both a blue or red sprinkles received a blue or red sprinkles cupcake for lunch. That's good. Raytown High eligible students, six hundred forty-nine students, forty-eight percent of total student enrollment. At Raytown, that was Raytown High, their eligible students was six hundred fifty-nine students, forty-eight percent of total student enrollment. Raytown South High eligible students was five hundred ninety-two students, fifty percent of total student enrollment. This is, we want you to save the date for this. Raytown Educational Foundation will hold its ninth annual Shiva Love Community Breakfast on Wednesday, February seventh, twenty-twenty-four. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Douglas. All right, next we have School Board Member Ethics. We need a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passes. Next, we have the basic financial statements year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three financial audit.
Move that the board accept the audit of basic financial statements.
Any discussion? Motion made and seconded. Next is the early retirement incentives. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, we would like to put early retirement incentive outline and vote and discuss.
Right.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Yes, I do have a question, Mr. President. How, how did we come to a decision about the various amounts? Because there, I see they're tiered from January through February.
Good evening, members of the board. We simply doubled the amounts that we used in previous years. What we did was did away with early resignation incentive because I'm here to tell you, we need to keep every single one of those teachers. And so we've doubled the retirement incentive. Those are folks that have dedicated twenty-five plus years of service. So we simply doubled the four hundred, two hundred, one hundred amounts that we used in the past. When we ran those numbers, if we would have done this last year, we would, we spent about fifteen thousand dollars on early retirement, early incentive. Early retirement, early resignation incentive. If we used these numbers last year, we would have spent almost identical amount. So it makes sense to give more to those who are retiring and do away with the early resignation incentive.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one other question. So retirement incentive, so they have to, they have to be retirement eligible to get this?
No.
Actually file for retirement.
Actually move through retirement through peers or PSRS.
Thank you for real.
But then we would like them to come back as a work after retirement sub, so they can come back.
Motion passed. Next, we have the Missouri United School Insurance Council, music, renewal, in motion.
This number is seventy-three million, Missouri United School Insurance Council, we have two million fifty-eight thousand.
How much of an increase is? All right, next we have the K-five, April five consumers. Motion made and seconded. University Health Center Connections Student Program Agreement.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the Department of Health, where it connects to the program.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Yeah, oh, it's annoying. Motion passed. First read of twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five academic calendar. For information. Any discussion here? Anybody coming?
Mr. Burton asked a question, is there any discussion? Dr. Martin Knox pointed at me, so apparently, yes, there's discussion. What, is there any questions about the twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendar? I do want to thank the, the classroom educators that represented elementary, middle, and high schools to sit on that committee. Secondary and elementary administrators who sat in on that committee to give input about days and what that looks like and how those days and vacations impact classroom teachers and students. This is the first read, so we'll continue to get feedback and input about the twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendar. We should have a finalized version to bring to you in January.
Mr. President, how many days are included into the calendar for Inklum and West?
So we have to get by state law, one thousand forty-four student contact hours. And so the first day of school being August twenty-first, which is a teacher recommendation that we start the new school year on a Wednesday rather than a Monday. That isn't much proposition as we're transitioning students from summertime to school time. And so we have to get one, excuse me, one thousand forty-four hours in. We actually do that on this version of the calendar on May twenty-first. So the twenty-second and the half day on the twenty-third are what we would call kind of built-in days. Now, for example, Dr. McCarthy broke the water main pipe at Raytown High this year. And so we had to evacuate, we had to dismiss early. Now, when, when he does that, we've got to dismiss one school, that burns a whole snow day for us. And so even though we only dismissed one building, we had to burn a whole snow day for his water main problem. And so what you realize is that's, that's pretty tight in the schedule with regard to one point five days to burn. We also have, though, alternative methods of instruction days, AMI days that we can now use. I think as the weather, the weather patterns start to trend, that we're not seeing as severe weather anymore, knock on wood. Between our AMI days and a day and a half, we're pretty confident we will not be into excessive days.
I'm sure Josh shares some of that, Brian.
No, Josh is innocent in all matters in this little water main break.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three consent agenda as presented.
Motion made and seconded. And prior to taking the vote, I want to read out the donations for this month. We have a donation of paint worth eighty-two dollars from Kosi and Iris at Lowe's to Southwood Elementary School. A donation of four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars from Mary Lee Skytech at Raytown Tree, Three Trails, Puanus, to Ray County Public and Food Family Support Services. A donation of free pizza slice coupons worth two hundred and fifty dollars from Casey's Gas Station to Spring Valley Elementary School. A donation of life back kits worth nineteen hundred dollars from Girl Scouts Northwest Missouri, Northeast Kansas for Raytown Schools. A donation of cookies and brownies for staff conferences worth seventy-five dollars from Ascension Lutheran to North Fleet Elementary School. A donation of sandwiches and chips for staff conferences worth two hundred and twenty-five dollars from Skyline Church to North Fleet Elementary School. A donation of drinks for staff conferences worth seventy-five dollars from Rivers Edge Fellowship to North Fleet Elementary School. A donation of fourteen office chairs, thirteen pairs of scissors, ten red colored papers worth six thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars from General Services Administration to Raytown School District. And a donation of snacks or backpacks worth three hundred dollars from Idaho United Church of Price to Robinson Elementary School. We greatly appreciate all the donations that was given to us this month. This goes a long ways in helping our, to educate our, our students. We greatly appreciate it and look forward to working with everybody that made those donations. Continue and really appreciate your continued support. Take a vote. Motion passes. There, one last question?
Mr. President, I moved that the board adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting at eight oh eight P M.
Motion made and seconded.